Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, January 20th, 2021. Everyone, please rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. A couple of housekeeping notes. Don Beeler is unable to be with us this evening, and we have, just in case the audience can't see, we do have Plexiglas up, so if I'm speaking, I'm going to take my mask off. Moving on, can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Questions and comments from interested citizens? This is a closed public meeting this evening. However, the community was able to send in questions and comments to Ms. Vitucci, and I do believe there is one, so I'm going to ask Ms. Vitucci to go ahead and read that.
We have one public comment from Lorraine Loane. Hello, my name is Lorraine Loane, and I am a district resident. This evening, I want to talk about the resumption of in-person athletics in the district. I understand that this is a heavy lift, and I think your willingness to try to get this off the ground is impressive, but perhaps misguided. I want you to know that both of my children were varsity athletes, one swimming and the other a three-season runner, so I am fully aware of how athletics enriches a student's experience. If this is such a great idea, and maybe it is, why can we not do this for clubs, too? My kids were very active participants in club activity, another thing that enriches a student's school experience. Yet I am not seeing a similar effort to allow clubs to meet in person after school. In fact, I seldom see the same effort applied to sports applied to other things, and that's a shame. My kid learned just as much about teamwork and strategy from the chess club as from the cross-country team. I am not really surprised by this. For years, it has been demonstrated to me that the district worships at the altar of athletics. I see it every time there is an athlete of the week, every time I need to remind you when you have a national merit finalist, when your math team goes to states, and seemingly no one at a high level is aware of it, and when we have a brand-new turf field but 20-year-old science labs. I think a lot of this could be that athletics have an athletic director, someone who has a seat at the table during high-level meetings, who is there advancing the idea that athletics need to be championed. I am happy that the athletes have someone like Ms. Hock, but who is championing clubs at these meetings? At the same meeting where it was determined that having basketball or hockey practice was a good thing, who is there advancing the idea that chess club, art club, language honor societies, or any of the other clubs should also be able to meet in person? Explain to me why you are doing so much to normalize the school experience for athletes, yet not nearly enough for other students. I would be very interested to know how many students, grade 7 to 12, compete in varsity, JV, or modified athletics, and how many participate in clubs? So interested that I recently put in a Freedom of Information request seeking this information. Beyond the inequities between athletes and non-athletes, there are inequities among athletes. You are not running transportation for these students, so getting to and from practice foals on the family. I recall when Ed Mirhoff was the superintendent, and he canceled some activity buses. It was a big problem for me. At the time, both my husband and I were working out of the area and were unable to get my kid after swim practice on days the activity bus did not run. My family's woes, and that of others in a similar boat, didn't really resonate with Mr. Mirhoff or the board. We made it work by cobbling together a carpool-ride-sharing thing, something that you just cannot do during a pandemic. Are the students whose families are unable to get them to and from practice just out of luck? Finally, I want to talk about this meeting and the decision to not allow the public to participate in person. After having students, faculty, staff, and athletes return to the building, your decision to cloister yourselves from the public demonstrates extremely poor judgment and bad optics. Ms. Vitucci is phenomenal when she reads statements from the public, but as good as she is, most people would prefer to hear their words in their voice. This is not consistent with how most view governments that are open and welcome public participation. Thank you. Go Bills.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any updates from questions or comments from the previous meeting?
No.
May I get a motion for an approval of the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. May I get a motion of the appointment of the Art Purchase Committee? Which, excuse me, before I get the motion, I just want to read that it will be this year for Mr. Anderson will be one of our representatives, Mr. Siriello, and Mr. Kueifman will be our three art representatives for the Purchase Awards this year. Are you guys all okay with that? I just want to officially ask. Okay, perfect. So can I have a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Oh, I'm sorry, a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Okay.
Do you know if they have dogs playing pool?
Yeah. I know. Hopefully, we'll be able to see some of this great stuff in the spring. The committee reports. Don is not here, so I'm going to pass it to Patrick for any update for, I'm sorry, Patrick, I don't mean to catch you off guard.
That's fine.
For audit and facilities.
And you might as well throw in visitation in there, too, Patrick. You could update everyone on the visitation.
So, yeah, so I'll start with visitation. So we had a meeting last week, right? We went to Central Valley Elementary School. We toured the building with Principal Christine Arlt and discussed some of the things that she's requesting. There was nothing really, no heavy lift there. You know, we talked about PA systems and a few other things. We have a meeting next week, I think, visiting the middle school, and, you know, we've been pretty active with visitation. We've had some good feedback from the buildings, and we've done some things like a vestibule at the high school because of the visitation committee. Facilities, we haven't had a meeting probably since November, I think, like mid or late November, and I think the, one of the things on the agenda would be to evaluate the energy performance contract idea. You know, we had a presentation. We've talked about that. I've requested more information from the company that spoke to us, and so I think, you know, that would be maybe the next thing Facilities takes up is evaluating, you know, the feasibility, the desirability of that sort of project, that capital project. And an energy performance contract is, it's a capital project with improvements related to energy conservation. So it's a lot of things we might normally do, but it's oriented to essentially paying for itself, the improvements through energy savings. That's what the EPC concept is. In terms of the Audit Committee, we have on the agenda tonight the approval of the Corrective Action Plan, so from our 2019-20 external audit. So that's the audit by Nigent and Hausler. That's a separate agenda item. I'll talk about it now, if you don't mind, Stacey.
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
It's related to the Audit Committee. So, you know, in terms of the findings, there was nothing, I wouldn't say there's really anything significant. The first finding was citing the district for holding a bit more 4.5% in unassigned fund balance. So we're typically required to hold no more than 4%. And so that was something that we had done by design based on the uncertainty associated with state aid. You know, we're still sort of under the threat of a cut to state aid in the current year, and we thought it made sense to hold a little bit more in unassigned fund balance to have that flexibility, you know, almost like, you know, hedge against the uncertainty associated with state aid. So if, you know, if we did get a cut, we would have that extra fund balance to balance the budget, if you will. School Lunch Fund, so they discussed the loss in the School Lunch Fund last year, and we touched on that at a previous meeting. We lost about $419,000 last year because of the closure, the COVID-19-related closure in March. And unfortunately, the same thing is happening this year because of closures and fewer students and diminished revenue. So a lot of our fixed costs are still there, but we just don't, we're not having the revenue. So the loss at this point is nearly $400,000 for the current year. So we had about $149,000 in fund balance remaining at the end of 1920. So unless, you know, we reverse that trend, we're going to have another fairly significant loss in the School Lunch Fund, and the general fund would actually have to make a transfer to make that whole. So it's a concern, you know, and it's something we actually had a meeting about today. One of the things that we had talked about is pushing students to, students that are in person, obviously, to take the lunch, to take the breakfast. And we were going to talk to school, the building administrators about really marketing that, because right now, I don't know if everyone knows that, the lunches are free. And financially, it benefits the district to actually serve the lunch, because we receive state and federal aid for every meal that we serve. So, you know, right now, the more lunches we can push out, the better off students are because they can have a free meal, and the better off we are financially in the School Lunch Fund.
And are we still allowing for, if your child is not in school on that cohort day, that you're still allowing people to come to the building to pick those lunches up?
Yep.
Because perhaps we should, you know, republicize that, because I do think there was a, I did see a couple of questions about that in the community as to whether or not that program had ended at the end of December.
No, it has not.
Okay.
Patrick, is it just lunch or is it breakfast as well?
It's both.
It's both.
Yeah.
Since June 1st?
Pardon?
June 1st is the deadline now?
It would go to the end of the school year, the 30th.
Oh, because somebody posted something, I thought it came out of the school, that it was June 1st, June 30th?
June 30th, yeah, yeah.
So maybe we can resend something out to families so that they're aware of that?
Yep, because we're still doing that, and, I mean, that benefits us, too, and benefits those that are getting the meals. The other thing that we were considering to sort of reverse this trend was serving or generating meals over the weekend. So that's permissible, and it's something we're sort of piloting right now is having folks pick up a meal on a Thursday, Friday for Saturday. So that could be another thing that would help the financial performance of the School Lunch Fund, so that's something we're looking into. In terms of the other findings, let's see. They cited us for not making certain transfers between reserves, waiting till the end of the year to do that, so that's something we're going to remedy that's part of the Corrective Action Plan, do that, you know, almost monthly, and it's not something that recurs regularly. There's only a couple of those in a year. And they also cited us for being behind on our internal audits, so we're catching up with that. We've, we approved a recent audit where we now have an audit report that we're going to bring to the Audit Committee probably within the next month or so, and then we would do another audit for this year, and we'd be all caught up. So we're just basically behind in the internal audit function.
Okay.
So that was the, that's the Corrective Action Plan, basically, in a nutshell.
Okay, perfect. And I know that you said that that's on the agenda and a couple more items, so, but thank you for the explanation. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that now while we're on it?
No, just to say that maybe they said June 1st because we typically don't serve lunch all the way through till the end of June, right? We stop serving at a certain point.
Right.
Full year.
Yep, that's true.
Okay. And then I'll update for Policy Committee. We are having a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM where we are going to start to do some work on an equity policy. So we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM for a policy, and we'll go ahead, and as soon as those future meetings get scheduled for a visitation, well, visitation is scheduled already for next week, and once we get facilities and audit published, we'll have those put up on the website. Okay, thank you. Report by Emily Wong, our student representative?
So tonight, I would like to share my updates on the project I started back in September of my SAT preparation program, Essential Prep, which is my free student-led SAT program that I made for people who are in low-income households, but it's welcome for everybody to join. With the help of Mrs. Rodriguez and Mrs. Thurston, I was able to get, to quickly get the announcement of our second SAT program up and running. The first one I ran last year was a huge success, and we had a lot of returning students sign up for a second time, which was good to see. Once again, it's an eight-week program with two classes per week, each an hour to an hour and a half long. On the signup form, we had an overwhelming 120-plus students sign up to attend our course. Not only were there juniors, but we also had sophomores prepping for the PSAT who were emailing and asking to join. We also had a lot of emails inquiring about a later program or one for 10th graders potentially, so the tutors and I will definitely keep this in mind as we continue to develop the program later this year. Our 2021 winter program actually started this week. The tutors and I had an extremely busy weekend organizing, planning, and replying to emails in preparation for this course. With the huge amount of signups, we were forced to adapt and change our team a little bit with new positions in the program and even new tutors. Josh Kaplan, Megan Catherwood, and Matt Bezdecheck have joined our team. In addition to tutoring, they're helping out with running the program. Josh Kaplan is our Performance Coordinator, Megan Catherwood is our Attendance Coordinator, and Matt Bezdecheck is our Classroom Moderator. As far as the positions of the old tutors, I'm still running the program as the Executive Director overseeing and planning all functions in the program. Carly Newman is our Forms Coordinator, and Jay Sethi is still our Website Coordinator slash Moderator. Olivia McQuaid is now our Testing Coordinator, Brian Woodfield is our Communications Coordinator, and Jason Pearson is our Email Coordinator, working with Josh to send out specialized weekly performance reports to all the parents. In comparison with the last program's three classes, we are now holding five classes throughout the week. With the amount of emails we were receiving, we all knew it would be really important to run this program as organized as possible. We really hope the new changes to this program will keep parents in the loop of their child's performance on the SAT and add a new level of structure to the program. Additionally, our website is now up to date with the current program. We have an updated FAQ section, as well as the Up to Date Meet the Team section, where you can read about all their new tutors, Josh, Megan, and Matt. And this month with the launch of our new program, I'm hoping to get the review book drive that I've been planning to actually start collecting books in a hopefully safe, COVID-friendly way. I hope to meet with Mr. Cassidy to talk more about that. And that's all for the updates on our new 2021 winter program. However, all the tutors and I would also like to inform not just juniors, but every Monroe Woodbury student that the College Board has announced the end of the SAT essays and the SAT subject tests. This is a great relief to hear among these tough and stressful times, as the SATs alone were adding an immense amount of stress to students along with COVID. The tutors and I would just like to remind all parents that we are all seniors in high school who are extremely busy outside of running and teaching the program. We will try to respond as quickly as possible to all emails, but sometimes may be really difficult, especially on weekends and weekdays, of course. We ask you to bear with us, as we are just regular students, not professional adults, but thank you.
Emily, I have a question. Do you have any junior tutors, like juniors that are tutors that can transition into the position as a senior so that there's some continuity?
So right now, a lot of the juniors haven't taken an SAT yet, so it's hard to, like, kind of find someone to train, I guess, but we are hoping that after the March SAT, we can kind of get some interested juniors who are helping to continue the program into next year. We had some parents talk about if there was a summer program, which I don't know if that's something we would, like, do, but I'm sure the juniors I pass it along to will, like, try.
What was the criteria that was used to select the tutors? You say that they haven't taken the test, was that part, like, to achieve a certain score on the SAT?
Well, all of the tutors that I asked, we were all kind of like close with each other before, and that kind of added a level of connection to the program, but we also knew that we all had a relatively high score on the SAT, so it was easier for us to teach because we obviously knew the material well enough, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Emily. I'm going to turn it over to Matt for Personnel.
Thank you. Good evening. Prior to asking for approval for the items listed under Personnel, I just want to point out a few things. First of all, we have two retirements on tonight's agenda. We have Pat Baitwell, who is our Assistant Director for Transportation. She started here as a driver and moved her way up. She is someone who will be absolutely missed. We also have Kathy Van Etten. For those of you who have students or children who have played sports, you've probably dealt with Ms. Van Etten at some point. She's the Secretary in the Athletic Office, so she has spent many years here and helped play a role in the Athletic Department that has seen many student athletes and many victories on the field, in the pool, on the ice, on the track, and now at the bowling alley. Speaking of retirement, there is a resolution under Personnel as well. It's a memorandum of agreement between the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association and the school district. So just so everybody understands, by contract, teachers have to let us know by January 30th if they are going to be retiring that year in order to be eligible for a retirement incentive per their contract. What's happened with COVID, it's been much more challenging for people to arrange for meetings with TRS, the Teacher Retirement System. They don't have in-person meetings anymore. They don't have the option to go to Central Valley anymore and have those teleconferences. So that's bumped things back as far as TRS. So what we decided to do is to push back the January 30th date for just this one calendar year to March 1st, and what that also does is that brings us in line or brings that unit in line with our teaching assistants and our clerical, who also have to let us know by March 1st. So from a hiring standpoint, we'll know when everybody needs to retire or who's interested in retiring by March 1st for planning purposes. So with that, I respectfully request approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay, thank you. This is item number 11, the Corrective Action Plan. Patrick just discussed this. Is there any other questions regarding this item? Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the Corrective Action Plan? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Patrick, for Business and Financial?
Yeah, thank you. I would respectfully request approval of the items under the Business and Financial section of the agenda, which include our monthly financial reports for November, donation of three instruments to the middle school, a clarinet and trumpet from Mrs. Dawn Tauber, our very own Mrs. Dawn Tauber, and an alto saxophone from Nancy Wills, and a $20 donation from New York Life Giving Fund to the Monroe Woodbury High School. We have some items for obsolescence or surplus, Smithцove library furniture and shelving, and transportation tools and equipment for buses that are no longer in service. And finally, approval of the budget calendar for the 2021-2022 budget process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about anything? I just have one question, that after we approve the calendar this evening, that'll get published on the website, yes?
Yep.
Okay, great. So all those in favor, or, excuse me, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Committee on Recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Reports by Board and Central Office. I'm going to start with Dawn because I realize that this is probably one of Sergey's first times that he's actually gone around the table, so I'm going to start with Dawn, but Sergey, you're welcome after her to go ahead and give us a little insight on how you've been doing for the last month and a half. Go ahead, Dawn.
Well, first, I'd like to, you know, tell everyone how excited I was to welcome all of our students back to school this week. It's been great from everything I've been hearing from the schools, how awesome it is to have everyone back. And I want to thank both Dr. Hausler and all of the administrators and staff and students that made our Board Appreciation Day so enjoyable. It really was awesome. I had a little bit of a reservation going into it, but it was a great day, a lot of laughs, a lot of fun, great to see the kids, looking forward to our little Board of Ed Morning Show segment. But overall, just the enthusiasm and the commitment to the students from our staff and the engagement from our students was just amazing to see firsthand. You know, we've been hearing about it, but just seeing it from that perspective was great. So that's it. I hope we continue on this course and we keep our students in our schools, and that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you, Dawn. Sergey, go ahead. I'm putting you on the spot.
Keep going.
Okay, keep going. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Not ready yet? I would also like to welcome our students back. I know my daughter-in-law is extremely grateful that Evan is back in school two days a week. I'm very hopeful that 2021, people, enough people will be vaccinated, that we can get back to some kind of normal life, and I wish everyone a Happy New Year and a happy school year.
Thank you. Emily?
Well, I unfortunately wasn't able to go in this week, but I'm excited to go in next week if that could be a thing, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Donna?
I just want to say welcome back to everyone, Happy New Year, and if you're interested in possibly running for the Board of Education, contact me. packets will be available probably in the next month or two, and if you have any questions though, please feel free to just call.
Thank you. Bargav?
Great to see the staff and students back in the building. Finally, from the computer center, we can see the kids playing in the Sapphire Playground, so it was really a really good mindset for all of us. The state has not changed any mind yet about the testing, so tomorrow we are doing a simulation for our online testing from 3 to 8, and the network is fine, so it should be not a big deal.
Okay, great. Eric?
Just a quick congratulations to everybody who was appointed, and best wishes to everyone who's residing and/or retiring. Welcome back, everybody, on your, those that are returning physically to the building. As everybody else has said, it's great to see life back in the schools. Patrick, I have, I have at least one of the three Hausler children eating school lunch. I'm working, I'm working, I'm working on the other two. I'm trying. It's one out of the three so far. And also, to echo Mrs. Tauber's comments, just a thank you to all the students, staff, and administrators for the planning that went into the Board of Education tour around the schools. It was, it was good insight into what life is like in the virtual world, where we had a series of seven Google meets throughout the day, one in each of the buildings, where we, we had an opportunity to participate in some slice of life in that respective building, and, you know, it was, it was a full day of Google meets. So in addition to being able to see what life is like in the buildings, it was also an experience on what life is like for our kids that were living in their fully remote world. So, you know, thank you to everybody that was able to participate, and thanks to all those who organized it.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, so I also would just like to welcome everyone back. It's great to have the kids back in-person school again, and the staff. And then just mention that the governor had released his executive budget proposal for next year, and so we're analyzing, you know, right now, some of the state aid runs and things. It feels like it's largely dependent on federal money, which is something we've said all along. He outlined two scenarios, or either get like $6 billion or $15 billion. They're obviously lobbying and pushing for the higher number, and it feels like at $15 billion in terms of the federal aid, that would bridge the gap for the state for two years, the two-year deficit, and things would be somewhat normal in terms of state aid, but we'll see what happens.
Okay. Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what everyone says about welcoming students back, staff back. We did a lot over the last few weeks to make sure that it continues to be safe, and we're glad they're, we're glad they're home.
Thank you. Michael?
I just want to wish everyone a safe, healthy, and happy 2021.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, I just want to welcome everybody back and wish everyone a Happy New Year and a good evening.
Thank you. Dan?
I want to wish everybody a good night.
Thank you. Sergey? I'm sorry, I absolutely did not prepare you for this, and I apologize. That was very bad on my part, I apologize.
I do well under pressure, though.
I know.
I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I am excited about school returning to some sort of normalcy, and excited to see that we are beginning to handle this pandemic with much force, and I would like to remain optimistic, and hopefully we can go back to normal schedule next year.
Thank you so much. Elsie?
I echo what everyone else has said. It was great seeing the kids back in school. I mean, it was, the energy was high, and the teachers were excited, so it was really, really good. It is not school when we don't have kids here, so make sure you come back next week. And a big thank you to Emily and her classmates for doing this and taking this project on. I mean, that's what we want our kids to do. We want our students to think about paying it forward, and I think that that's part of what I'm so proud of you for doing, that it's a project that you're paying it forward. So thank you. Congratulations to Pat Baitwell, but she's still with us till the end of June, so Pat's not going anywhere. Kathy, on the other hand, Kathy Van Etten is leaving at the end of the month, and she will be missed. And on that note, I just want to say good night and thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, too, want to welcome everybody back. I think yesterday went very well. We didn't visit any of the schools, but I know Mrs. Rodriguez and some of the cabinet did, and I know that I had my three daughters in the seats yesterday, and it's still different, but they were happy to be back. So I appreciate all of the work that actually goes on behind the scenes to make that happen. So I know I'm definitely appreciative of that.